All righty then, the date is June 25th, 2024, 1734 hours. I would like to call the Frederick County School Board meeting to order. We have an agenda before us, do I have a motion for approval?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to approve the agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the agenda and it has been properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Madam Vice Chair, it is a pleasure of the Board.
Mr. Chair, I move that the County School Board of Frederick County, Virginia, enter a closed session meeting for the following. One, for consultation with legal counsel for the provision of legal advice regarding Title IX policies and public comment policies during board meetings pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711, Paragraph A, 8, and to review and discuss appointments, administrative appointments, dismissals, leave of absence, resignations, information only, support staff, substitutes, tutors, and volunteers pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711, Paragraph A, dot one, and to review and discuss the superintendent's evaluation pursuant to Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711, Paragraph A, dot one, and to review and discuss the contracts for the assistant superintendent's pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711, Paragraph A, one.
All right, we have a motion.
Second.
Has been properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's passed. We are now in closed session and we'll reconvene at 1900 hours. All right, the time is 1947 hours, and I would like to apologize to everyone, we did not realize that the closed session was going to go as long as it did. There were a lot of policy things and some talking points that we had to deal with, as far as legal points, so I would like to apologize. We did not plan it to go as long as it did. So unfortunately, it's just something that happened, it wasn't planned, so I do apologize. I understand everybody's got, was waiting for a while, and I appreciate that, but unfortunately, we had a lot of things to discuss back there, and we even started early, so we tried to get it done in a timely fashion. So with that said, Madam Chairman, what's the pleasure of the Board?
Mr. Chair, thank you. I move that the County School Board of Frederick County, Virginia, return from the closed session.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to return from closed session, and it has been properly seconded. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Madam Clerk, call the rule.
Dr. Erskine?
Aye.
Mr. Atkins?
Aye.
Mr. Bell?
Aye.
Ms. Martin?
Aye.
Mrs. Klein?
Aye.
Mr. Sturdivant?
Aye.
That motion has passed.
And, Mr. Chair, I move that to the best of each Board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act were discussed in the closed session, and only such public business matters were identified in the motion by which the closed session was convened or heard, discussed, or considered by the Board.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to certify the closed session, it's been properly seconded. Any discussion? Do we do roll call on that? Madam Clerk?
Dr. Erskine?
Aye.
Mr. Atkins?
Aye.
Mr. Bell?
Aye.
Ms. Martin?
Aye.
Mrs. Klein?
Aye.
Mr. Sturdivant?
Aye.
That motion has been carried. Madam Chair, or Madam Vice Chair, rather.
That is it.
No motions?
No more motion. Actually, we do. We have two motions at a closed session. I move to approve the personnel actions as recommended by the superintendent.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the personnel actions, and it's been properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That motion carries.
I move to approve the attendant superintendent contracts, assistant superintendent contracts.
Second.
Okay, that motion has been approved and properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That motion carries.
All right.
All righty then. If I could, can I get everyone to just join me in a mo, yes, sir?
No, keep going.
All right. If I could just get everybody to join me in just for a moment of silence, as we usually All righty, thank you for that. If everyone could stand, and we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's done, that's done, that's, okay. All right. Next is a consent agenda, yes, no?
And, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion that's been properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That motion has been carried. Now, where does student and staff recognition? So next on here, I'm going to give that to Dr. Hummer, is the student and staff recognition.
All right, thank you very much, and good evening, and welcome, everybody, to our Awards of Excellence program. Thank you all so much for taking time out of your busy schedules. Before we proceed, I would like to ask that everyone stay here through the entire program out of respect of each individual who is being recognized. Once we have completed all of the presentations, you will have an opportunity to leave and enjoy the rest of your evening. In addition, when you come forward to receive your certificate or to be acknowledged as a school, please take a moment to pause with Mr. Sturdivant and myself for a photograph, and then move to the right to remain in the front, and we'll take a photo of the entire group being recognized. With that, have Mr. Sturdivant and I come on down.
We're going to need someone to announce out in the hallway, too, because there's a lot of people out in the foyer.
The James Wood girls soccer team was state runners-up and finished the season with seventeen wins, two losses, and three ties. The team is led by Region 4D Coach of the Year Donovan Russell. Eva Damari. Head Coach Donovan Russell. The James Wood High School softball team finished first in Region 4D with an overall regular season record of 17 to 3. This great accomplishment earned them the opportunity to compete in the state quarterfinals. Their overall record for the season was 19-5. And Larry Rigg is here tonight to accept on the coaching staff, Patrick Gibson and Chris Green. The James Wood High School baseball team made it to the state quarterfinals. The baseball team finished the year with 14 wins and 10 losses. The team is led by Northwestern District Coach of the Year Adrian Pullen. Jacob Hardy. Kobe Nestelrod. Kemper Umms. Trevor Strohsneider. Brock Whipke. Owen Neal. Kayden McCullough. Ethan Redkey. And Head Coach Adrian Pullen. VHSL Division IV State Track and Field Championships in Lynchburg, Virginia. The results are as follows. Kate Conyer, 3200-meter run, fourth overall in state. And Kate's from James Wood High School. From Millbrook High School, Jada Arrington. Jada received third place in the 100-meter race, fourth place in the 200-meter, and second place in the 400-meter. Jenai Washington, fourth place high jump. From Shorando High School, Micah Carlson, Discus, sixth place. Boys' eighth-place team in the 800-meter relay, Jed Bell. And we also have a parent this evening receiving for Hatcher Smith, Smith, Brock, and Dylan Next is our excellence award for our community stakeholders. The excellence award is given to a community member, group, or business that has demonstrated exceptional dedication and support for Frederick County Public Schools students and staff. This accolade recognizes those whose contributions have significantly enhanced the educational experience and well-being of the FCPS community. We have Robert Wallin III. Mr. Wallin donated the money needed to purchase wrestling mats for the Robert E. Ailer and Admiral Richard Eber Middle School Wrestling Programs. Next, we have Teresa Pizarro. Ms. Pizarro is a dedicated case manager at Northwestern Community Services and has worked tirelessly with Apple Pie Ridge Elementary School to support students, making a profound impact on our school community. She provided comprehensive support to students, addressing their diverse needs with empathy and professionalism, creating a supportive environment where students thrive academically, socially, and emotionally. Next, we have Adam Files. Mr. Files has served as the Apple Pie Ridge Elementary School PTO Treasurer, is a regular substitute teacher, and a dedicated volunteer who makes significant contributions to the Apple Pie Ridge Elementary School community. He's always ready to lend a helping hand, provides resources, and offers encouragement. He's a beloved figure in the school. Next, we have Joe Lizer. Mr. Lizer's unwavering support and generous contributions to Apple Pie Ridge Elementary School community have made a significant impact on students, teachers, and staff. Each year, he provides thoughtful gifts for new teachers and staff, helping to create a welcoming and appreciative environment. Mr. Lizer also sponsors the Fifth Grade Awards, celebrating student achievement and potential. He also donates the pumpkins for the annual pumpkin drop. This event brings such joy to students, creating memories and a sense of community. Next, we have Devin Thomas with Navy Federal. Navy Federal is instrumental in supporting bright futures. They help with weekly food packs, holiday assistance, the Community Safety Fair, and food drives. They are always willing to give of their time, talents, and treasures to support the Bobby Williams and Mandy Helsley of CMA Subaru Winchester. For the past three years, Subaru has donated $500 to 25 to 30 classrooms through Adopt a Classroom, supporting teachers' professional learning and updated state standards. They funded flexible seating involving students in the decision-making process and donated 175 flexible seating options in the 2022-23 school year. Subaru has also donated and installed a gazebo for an outdoor classroom and provided $2,500 worth of math manipulatives collaborating with the instructional coach and Mrs. Rinker. They have given classroom kits to 20 to 25 teachers annually, including diary of raceboards, markers, and other useful items. They support many Orchard View families during the holiday season and contribute monthly to the food pantry. Subaru recycles scrap metal and uses the proceeds to purchase food for Orchard View families. During teacher appreciation, CMA Subaru Winchester provides lunch for all staff. Ryman Clater with HN Funkhauser &amp; Company. HN Funkhauser &amp; Company has generously provided $500 grants to each of Frederick County's 21 public schools to support math and science programs. The grants, which total $10,500, are the result of a partnership between HN Funkhauser and the ExxonMobil Educational Alliance. Eagles 824 donated $15,000 to the Dow J. Howard Center Carpentry Program. This donation has gone a long way in enhancing the educational opportunities for the Dow J. Howard Center Carpentry students, and will also help future endeavors. We also have one more item for our Eagles 824 members from the carpentry students.
Several of my students and myself, and mainly my students, have been in the huddle. But you know something, for you guys, from back there, they didn't know they were working on it. I need you to help me claim this, or I need you to help me rip this down, or I need you to help me move this up, but this is their end of the song.
It's been a long night for you, for everybody here. It's really nice to be here to give money to kids going to education programs, and we give a lot of money in the area. We give about $400,000 away to this kind of thing, and brother. I shouldn't know his name, because he's an officer in my area, and I'm a citizen officer, and I forgot his name. Anyway, I'm going to tell you more time, but we do a lot of charity work for non-profit organizations. We've been in Winchester since 1904, so we've been around a long time. So it's for young people like you guys, and ladies, that we keep going, and you keep going on your education. That's what it's all about, and that's all I want.
Next is our...
Administrative appointments.
Administrative appointments, again, I'll turn that over to Dr. Hummer.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. So we have four administrative appointments that we would like to announce. First, I would like to call up Mr. Melvin Wamboldt as the new Assistant Principal at James Wood Middle School. So if Mr. Wamboldt can come on up, please, join me in congratulating him. Mr. Wamboldt brings with him to FCPS nine years of administrative experience and additional four years of teaching experience. He holds a Bachelor of Arts from Physical and Health Education from Fairmont State University, a Master's of Educational Leadership from Salem International University, and a Master's of Curriculum and Instruction, Higher Education Administration, also from Salem International University, excuse me. Please join me again in welcoming Mr. Wamboldt. Welcome, sir.
Just wanted to say thank you, thank you to each of you for the opportunity. Thank you to Dr. Woolover and Mr. Baer for the opportunity to work with them. I'm really excited to get started and make James Wood Middle School the best school in the county.
Go Bulldogs!
Next, I would now like to call up Ms. Liesl Baldwin as the new Coordinator of Family and Community Engagement. Let's give her a round of applause. Ms. Baldwin, Ms. Baldwin brings over 16 years of experience in working with families throughout the community through her work with Valley Health, the Winchester and Clark County Departments of Social Services, and Parents as Teachers National Center. Ms. Baldwin has an Associate's Degree in Applied Arts and Science in Early Childhood Education from Laurel Ridge Community College, and a Bachelor's Degree in Applied Arts and Sciences in Early Childhood Education and Development and Interdisciplinary Studies with a minor in Psychology from Liberty University Online. So congratulations on all those accomplishments. Please join me in congratulating Ms. Baldwin. Welcome.
I just want to say thank you, and I'm really excited for the opportunity to start this journey and working with Frederick County Public School System, so thank you.
Great, welcome. Now, I would like to call up Ms. Shante Knight as the new Assistant Superintendent of Instruction. If she can come on up, please, welcome. Ms. Knight brings 22 years of experience in a wide variety of roles in public education, from teaching to principalships to the Director of Secondary Curriculum and Instruction. Most recently, Ms. Knight was the Director of Educational Leadership and Development at the Association of Supervision and Curriculum Development. Ms. Knight holds a Bachelor's Degree of Science in Elementary Education by Bowie State University, and a Master's in Educational Administration and Supervision from Trinity Washington University. Please join me in congratulating you, and welcome.
Thank you so much. Thank you for the privilege of being here today. I'm so sorry, I was caught off guard. I was celebrating with someone I recognized out there, and just cheering on the newest Assistant Principal for one of the middle schools, go middle school peeps. So just very quickly, I just want to, of course, greet the Chair, rest of our Board members, and of course, Dr. Hummer. Thank you so much. I consider it an honor to be here today. I think even more than that, I think prior to this, I counted myself fortunate to be considered, and now seeing how warmly and cheerfully you celebrate your students and your staff, I actually consider it a privilege to now have the honor to have been selected. So I am super stoked about supporting the FCPS community, and educational excellence and scholastic excellence has always been my north star. Thank you for the opportunity to bring that passion and commitment to Frederick County Public Schools. Thank you very much.
All right. Last, but definitely not least, I would like to call up the new Director of Special Instructional Services, Mrs. Shamika McDonald. Please join me in congratulating her. Mrs. McDonald has spent her career in Warren County Public Schools as a special education teacher for 13 years, an assistant principal for four years, and a principal for one year. She has been the Director of Special Services since 2022. Mrs. McDonald holds a Bachelor of Science in Human Services Counseling. a Bachelor of Science in Human Services Counseling from Old Dominion University, a Master of Arts in Education, Special Education, cross-categorical from the University of Phoenix Online, and a Certification in Educational Leadership from California University of Pennsylvania, and is currently pursuing her Educational Administration and her Doctorate of Educational Administration at Capella University. So please join me again in congratulating Mrs. Shamika McDonald.
Good evening, everyone. I have a very long speech. Just kidding. I just want to thank you for the opportunity. I'm really excited to be joining Frederick County Public Schools, and I look forward to supporting the community. Thank you.
That's all we have for announcements.
Just one more time, real quickly. Again, the board would really like to apologize. I understand it was a long time, and like I said, sometimes the wheels of government move a little slower than we would all like, but we really did try and get out here on time. So again, we apologize. Did not mean to keep you waiting quite so long. So at this point, I'd like to pause. For any of those who would like to leave and enjoy the rest of your evening, or you may please feel free and stay, but we'll give you that opportunity to dismiss. Alrighty then. We're at the point of our agenda for citizen comments. Frederick County School Board is pleased to receive public comments at each monthly meeting in order to allow the board sufficient time for its other business. The total time allowed for public comment will generally be limited to 20 minutes. Individuals speaking to the board will be allotted three minutes. Those individuals representing groups or organizations will be allotted five minutes with one representative per group. Upon recognition by the Chair, the speaker should clearly state their name, residing district, and the subject of their comments. All comments are to be addressed to the Chair. The board will receive comments, but will not respond to questions or engage in a dialogue. This is an opportunity to be heard, and the board will refer any issues or concerns to staff or appropriate committees. The School Board is committed to showing appropriate respect and courtesy to all citizens, and speakers are expected to show appropriate respect and courtesy to the board. Members of the audience are not permitted to interrupt the speaker or meeting by asking questions or making comments. School Board meetings are tape-recorded for the purpose of clarification and development of the official minutes. And we have three people signed up this evening. Doty Stottlemyre.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board and administration. I'm sorry. I think my mouth is gonna be stiff as my body. But my name is Doty Stottlemyre, and I reside in the Shawnee District. I come before you tonight to continue to express my concerns about the policy changes to the bylaws governing public participation at meetings. I first became aware of the policy changes while watching the public hearing video for June 10th. The original reading immediately caught my attention, introducing a great new benefit, electronic signups and phone signups, which are meant to extend the sign-up period from 8:00 a.m. the morning following the board's meeting till 12:00 noon the day of the next meeting. Plus expanding those folks who are eligible to speak to include Winchester City residents, Frederick County businesses, and other assorted categories. Unfortunately, the policy then went on to put a maximum limit of 10 speakers depending upon the board's pleasure. Thankfully, that limit language has been dropped since. I feel the requirements for signing up electronically to speak should not include the name and magisterial district unless there is a confirmation process. I do believe that before commenting, however, the speaker should be providing those items. Why should other localities need to be included? They do not have the county's community interests at heart. Clearly, county issues and concerns should be addressed by the county residents, not just anyone with an opinion to spout or some kind of an agenda to push. But the question still remains, how will you know with absolute certainty your submission to speak was received? Not saying this would happen, but it opens up the possibility that a particularly annoying speaker's name could be dropped, and who would be the wiser? Perhaps some future board decides they do not wish to hear a particular concern. My gut feeling is that this opens up a simply slippery slope of who gets to decide which person or policy issue is allowed to speak. In addition, why not continue to allow a sign-up sheet at the meetings for those folks who may not have access to emails, work an odd schedule, or may have just heard of an issue they wish to address? I appreciate the amount of time that each one of you has to spend performing your duties. I know that's a lot, and I realize that the public comment period may make some evenings long. It seems there may be no happy medium. Either there's too much participation or none at all. Our First Amendment rights cover all speech, and I urge this board to think of the times you may have wished for your voice to be heard. That may include a lost opportunity due to restrictions put in place by a well-meaning group of folks who might not have foreseen unintended consequences. Perhaps it may be a good idea to send this policy back to staff to make sure any issues that are a concern can be worked out, and then bring it back before the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Gail Ferreira. Did I say that right?
Good evening. I'm Gail Ferreira from the Shawnee District. Thank you, Miles, for being my representative there and all the work that you do. I'm here to speak, again, just to back up Doty here, on the recent changes regarding the public comments. Okay? The new changes propose having speakers sign up in advance to speak by either calling the School Board office or filling out a form on the website. And this is, this sounds to me like it's a little bit cumbersome and a little bit convoluted here, because we don't have to do that now. So I'm just kind of wondering why this is being proposed, because it's more convenient for people to come to the meetings and then sign up and then speak what their heart tells them to speak about. So I'm just wondering if this is making it difficult for speakers to come speak, and I don't think you're trying to suppress any speech from the taxpayers, because we do pay for the schools. So is this a state-mandated thing? Is this something that's coming that other Virginia school boards are doing? Don't know. So the changes proposed include the speakers also specify a topic, and this seems odd to me, because we don't do that now. And so could this open up opportunities where the School Board can then selectively pick and choose topics that are of interest, things that they want to drop? So it makes me a little suspicious. In the past, when we, the taxpayers, had something to say, all we had to do is sign in to speak that very night. So we want to be able to speak up and say what's on our mind, and previously, no pre-signup was required. So the changes in the public comments sounds quite un-American to me. I would highly recommend that the School Board revoke or rescind these changes other than the Student Participation Section. And remember that we voted you in. So if you do vote for yes for this, we could easily vote you out. Thank you.
Okay. Next is Brian Nury.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Brian Nury. I'm the resident of the Apeken District. Actually, thank you, Doty, for updating me, because I had an old version of the new rules. I want to say first, as a parliamentarian, I understand that the first duty of a deliberative body is to accomplish the work it is tasked to accomplish, be it passing laws, adopting policies, or just paying the light bills. In order to do this efficiently, rules of order were established, like Mr. Jefferson's manual or Robert's rules, and with the board's own bylaws, these govern how the members, both voting and non, may participate. At the other meeting, I agreed with Chairman Sturdevent and Ms. Martin that speakers should be required to clearly identify themselves before the board to facilitate any follow-up, not knowing who people are, just having them walk up and walk down. This is not a Fourth or Fifth Amendment violation, as was guessed at at the last meeting. This is a voluntary action, and participation is at the pleasure of this board. It's not a traffic stop where we are being mandated to identify ourselves. The gavel that the chairman has can be used to terminate a speaker's time as well as other measures, as clearly listed in the amended rules. But I do have one problem with the recognition where it says, "All comments are to be addressed to the Chair." That was stricken. That needs to be unstricken. Whenever anyone addresses a deliberative board, they are not speaking to the audience. They're not speaking to Dr. Hummer. They're not speaking to you, Dr. Erskine. They're talking to the Chair first and foremost, because that's the person who will be responding back to us with a "thank you very much" at the end. Section two of this requires speakers to show proper courtesy and the audience and vice versa. Some may try to construe this as early, we're trying to be stated, as setting up section four as a form of viewpoint discrimination. However, this policy covers the conduct of the speaker, not the content of their words. Nowhere is public participation guaranteed for a public meeting. If a situation warrants it, someone can be removed. I can tell you, I know right now, 20 years ago, I was thrown out of a Board of Supervisors meeting for speaking out of turn. Was my First Amendment violated? Nope. Was my Fourth Amendment? Nope. I was asked to leave because I was being disruptive. I'm glad to see that the Limited Participation Section has been removed, but it is not novel and unique. The policy, I have a list of localities across the state that limit participation on some speakers, some by periods and some by time, and all are amendable by the board's decision. One thing I would like to say, though, is I would like to see this board consider a policy that the cameras do not show the faces of the speakers during public comment. 29 different localities across the state, ranging from Fairfax and Loudoun County all the way down to Wise, and even Clark County, already do this. Being on camera is not a First Amendment issue. Across the country, we have seen far too many public commenters decide to make a spectacle before the board in order to get airtime on TV or to promote their own personal platforms with signs or vulgar displays, no matter the disruption, just looking for the attention. Therefore, I'd propose that the board develop a policy that only does audio recording during periods of public comment, replacing the video with a slide concerning FCPS policies. Thank you, and I have to go home and do homework.
Thank you. All right. That precludes everybody that has signed up. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak who did not sign up?
I've already spoken to you about this. You guys have so far done a great job. Don't screw it up with changing policies where people can speak and when they can't. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? All right, then that is going to conclude the public comments section of our meeting. And next on our agenda is new business. First up is the--
Mr. Chair, I apologize. Superintendent reports.
I apologize. I skipped something. Then we will go to the superintendent report.
I'll make it quick, I promise. So thank you, Mr. Chair. I have three items that I would like to share with you all, one of them being a pretty big one. First, I want to genuinely thank all of our sponsors and donors for all they do for our school division. I believe that is a true testament to the School Board, as well as the school division, of how much we impact, how much of an impact we have on this amazing community, and appreciate all of the support that they help us guide our youth for a better tomorrow. Thank you so much. I also want to thank and congratulate all of our student and staff awards, and also share the same sentiment of the board of thank you so much for sticking around and being able to celebrate that with you all. I love that portion of our School Board meetings, and it helps keep the main thing, the main thing, which is our amazing students. So I want to thank the School Board for allowing us to do that and have that portion of our School Board meeting. It means a lot. I'm also very excited for all of our new administrators joining us. This is a very busy time of year. Everyone always says, "Oh, you got, it's the summertime," and no, it's a different kind of busy, and it's probably busier than any other time of year. But hiring is in full swing, and we are very, very fortunate to have such great administrators that we are bringing on board to join our team. We all know that we have a lot of work to do, as we've had many discussions about, and we're looking forward to them joining the charge with us for our amazing students. And now for the big item. Dr. Jim Angelo, this is his last meeting. And as I'm sure you know--
What?
He has dedicated a lot of blood, sweat, and tears for this school division. It is with great honor and privilege to have worked alongside him as a colleague, as a mentor, and as a friend. Dr. Angelo has always worked hard at putting students first, and he has never, never wavered from that. He truly enjoys visiting with students and going to events, because that's what he wanted to do, to engage in all of the great things that are happening here in Frederick County, as well as what he has done to build this amazing school division. The summertime, as I mentioned, is a very busy time, and to show the true character that he has, since his retirement, since he announced his retirement, he has worked fervently every single day. Every single day he has worked, and he will work up until his last day this week. And I guarantee you, I'm probably gonna receive phone calls from him next week where I gotta tell him to just go away, and we got this, okay? That says a lot about his character, about his commitment to FCPS, and truly, truly leaving this place better than when he got here. I cannot thank Dr. Angelo enough for all he has done for our community, for our school division, for our students, and I'm looking forward to staying in touch with him. I would now like him to come down for a small token of our appreciation for what he has done for Frederick County Public Schools.
Thank you for that, Dr. Hummer. All right. Next on our agenda is the unfinished business.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Atkins.
I move that the board, I move for the board to retain Wagstaff and Cartmel LLP and its co-counsel to assist, to assert any claims it may have against the named social media defendants for damages arising out of the design and operation of social media platforms and creation of public nuisance, and to authorize the Chair of the School Board to execute the attorney-client engagement agreement in substantial the same form as presented.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion for the social media lawsuit, and it hasn't been properly seconded. Any discussion? All right. Madam Clerk, would you call a roll call vote on that, please?
Dr. Erskine.
Aye.
Mr. Atkins.
Aye.
Mr. Bell.
Aye.
Ms. Martin.
Aye.
Mrs. Klein.
Aye.
Mr. Sturdevent.
Aye. That motion carries. Okay. And number two is the Public Participation at Meetings 119P.
I'll do the amendments.
Yeah, that's fine. Yes, I move the board adopt the proposed amendments to Bylaw 119P, Public Participation at Meetings as Presented.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Atkins.
I move to amend.
Go ahead.
Excuse me. Just for clarification, are you moving to amend Mr. Bell's motion?
No. Well, yes, I'm sorry. So let me, can you redo, can you rescind your motion so I can just--
I rescind my motion.
Okay.
Can I do that?
Yes, you may. There hasn't been a second, so that is fine.
Okay. I rescind my motion.
All right. I move that the board approve the proposed amendments to Policy 119P, Public Participation at Meetings as Presented, but with the following changes to the paragraph that begins with "those wishing to speak to the School Board during the Citizen Staff Comments Period." One, at the end of the first sentence, add the phrase, "or by signing up at the beginning of the meeting utilizing the form provided by the clerk." Two, in the third sentence, strike until noon on the day of the meeting where the speaker wishes to speak and replace it with "until the meeting where the speaker wishes to speak is called to order." Three, in the fourth sentence, strike after noon on the day of the meeting and replace it with "after the meeting where the speaker wishes to speak is called to order." Four, at the end of the paragraph, add a sentence that states, "However, the Chair shall have the discretion to invite people who are physically present at the meeting to speak during the Citizen Staff Comment Period after everyone who has signed up has finished speaking." And I do so move.
Okay. We have a motion--
Second.
--and it hasn't been properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Dr. Erskine.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Atkins.
Aye.
Mr. Bell.
Aye.
Ms. Martin.
Aye.
Mrs. Klein.
Aye.
Mr. Sturdevent.
Aye.
That motion carries. Next is electronic participation in meetings from remote locations, 127P, bylaw second reading.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Atkins.
I move the board adopt the amendments to bylaw 127P.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Dr. Erskine.
Aye.
Mr. Atkins.
Aye.
Mr. Bell.
Aye.
Ms. Martin.
Aye.
Mrs. Klein.
Aye.
Mr. Sturdevent.
Aye.
Motion passes.
That motion carries. That concludes the unfinished business. Next on our agenda is new business. We have committee reports, starting with the Personnel Committee.
I can stand in and read that, Mr. Chair, if you'd like.
Please do.
All right. As soon as I find it here, just a moment. Thank you. Personnel Committee report for the Personnel Committee meeting on June 3, 2024. A meeting of the Personnel Committee of the Frederick County School Board was held on June 3, 2024. The meeting was called to order at 4:30 PM, and a copy of the minutes has been provided to each board member. During the meeting, Ms. Freckly gave a staffing update for fiscal year 2024, including vacancies and vacancies filled as of May 24, 2024. Mrs. Christie Shannon and Mr. Patrick North from Valley Health shared information regarding the transition from care team to the Valley Health Families Care Center, including different services offered, scheduling options, same-day care, and pharmacy management. Mrs. Jordan gave an update on the amendments to the U.S. Department of Education issued to the Title IX regulations. The meeting adjourned at 5:25 PM. Additional details regarding the information covered at the committee meeting are included in the minutes provided to board members. Are there any questions from board members about information shared at the Personnel Committee meeting held on June 3? Seeing no questions, I move the board approve the minutes from the Personnel Committee meeting held on June 3, 2024.
Second. Motion.
You have to make a motion.
I did.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded to adopt the Personnel Committee meeting minutes. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. Next is the Finance Committee meeting report.
Finance Committee meeting report. A meeting of the Finance Committee of the Frederick County School Board was held on June 10, 2024. The meeting was called to order at 4:35 PM, and a copy of the minutes has been provided to each board member. During the meeting, Ms. Camery gave an official, or gave an overview of the internal audit and shared the results. She also reviewed the VPSA borrowing and bond process, including refunding opportunities, construction project approval, bonding to reimbursement timeline, bond yield, and arbitrage. Next, Mrs. Camery discussed additional state dollars in the amount of $2.1 million that are restricted to at-risk programs only. A list of acceptable uses was provided for those at-risk dollars. She also shared the superintendent's recommendations for those additional state funds. Dr. Hummer clarified some of the recommendations, and Dr. Roliver, Mrs. Hickey, Mrs. Simmons, Mrs. Headley, and Dr. Myers answered board member questions. The meeting was adjourned at 5:26 PM. Additional details regarding the information covered at the committee meeting are included in the minutes provided to board members. Little editorializing here for those in the audience and those online. We are covering a lot of very important finance things regarding our CIP projects, which include the fourth high school. I highly encourage you to attend. And are there any questions from board members about information shared at the Finance Committee meeting held on June 10? All right, seeing no questions, I move the board approve the request to the Board of Supervisors for a supplemental appropriation for $1,372,353 to be used to fund 15 FTE, full-time equivalent, positions as presented by the superintendent, and for the Board of Supervisors to accept a return of $720,647 of local Frederick County dollars previously appropriated to the school division by the Board of Supervisors.
Second.
Okay, we have the motion, and it has been properly seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the board approve the minutes from the Finance Committee meeting held on June 10, 2024.
Second.
Okay, we have the motion and been properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Next up is the Building and Grounds Committee meeting minutes.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Atkins.
A meeting of the Building and Grounds Committee of Frederick County Public Schools was held on June 17, 2024. The meeting was called to order at 4:40 PM, and a copy of the minutes has been provided to each board member. During the meeting, Mr. Davis discussed the capital projects list, highlights including the James Wood Middle School interior painting project that, and the fire alarm projects for the summer of 2024. He also shared notable summer 2024 projects and recently funded 2024 projects. Mr. Kenny gave an update on the James Wood High School renovation. Mr. Combs, Mr. Barb, and Mr.
Bowden Shots.
Bowden Shots discussed the naming of the baseball field at Sherrando High School to Pepper D. Martin Field after former Sherrando head coach, head baseball and wrestling coach, Martin. Mr. Lee reviewed the Frederick County Middle School farmland lease renewal. Mr. Motley, Mr. Phillips, and Mr. Merceri from RRMM Architects shared a conceptual site and floor plans for the potential fourth high school. They also discussed a cost estimation for an initial student capacity of 1,285 students, as well as initial student capacity of 1,544 students. Both with a core student capacity of 1,600 students, the meeting adjourned at 6:22 PM. Additional details regarding the committee meeting are included in the minutes provided to board members. Do board members have any questions about what was covered at the Building and Grounds Committee meeting held on June 17? Hearing none, I have three action items. One, I move that the board approve the request to rename the baseball field at Sherrando High School to the Pepper D. Martin Field.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to rename the baseball field and been properly seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Atkins.
So, at this committee meeting, they talked about all the accomplishments that Coach Martin had, the winning baseball seasons, championships, his work with students that weren't even, that he wasn't even coaching, one of our board members being one of them. And it's just, he's been a bright spot in this community. It's been a long time coming, and I'm proud to be part of the committee that's recommending this name change. So, with that, it's been, motion seconded.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
All right, second. I move that the board approve the farmland lease agreement and authorize the chair of the school board to execute the farmland lease agreement in substantially the same form as presented.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Last, I move that the board approve the minutes of the Building and Grounds meeting held on June 17, 2024.
Second.
Motion's been made to approve the minute, the committee, committee meeting minutes, and has been properly seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Atkins.
During the meeting minutes, I shared that Mr. Kenny gave an update to the James Wood High School renovation. I went out there today to take a look at that, and it's progressing wonderfully. There's a lot going on out there, and a lot of work's gone on, not with just the construction folks, but Frederick County staff has been out there helping to move stuff around, showing a lot of pride and initiative on the staff's behalf, and I wanted to give them special recognition tonight, saying thank you for all the hard work you're doing, coming in on your summertime. I know that everybody wants to eat hot dogs and hamburgers by the pool, but, you know, for them to actually come in and, you know, really do a lot of work in the school that they love so much, it shows a lot for the character of our staff, so thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the Instruction Committee meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bell.
A meeting of the Instruction Committee of the Frederick County School Board was held on June 17, 2024. The meeting was called to order at 6:32 PM, and a copy of the minutes has been provided to each board member. During the meeting, Mrs. Swager gave an update on the Virginia Literacy Act. Mrs. O'Connor, Mrs. Kulp, Mrs. Patton, and Mrs. Burke gave an update to the Elementary Grading Coalition, including recommendations, the purpose of grading, the different reporting labels, reporting on standards, competencies, and learning behaviors, as well as next steps. Dr. Myers, Dr. Yitzhun, and Dr. Simmons gave an update to the Secondary Grading Coalition, including the purpose of grading, the competencies, and learning habits, and a timeline for 2024-25. Mrs. Rittenhour reported on Title I, Part D, which provides support for neglected and delinquent students in Frederick County. She also shared the process for being found eligible for Timber Ridge School and gave a funding breakdown. Dr. Williams Sandy discussed the approval of the Special Education Advisory Committee members for 2024-2025. Dr. Angelo reviewed the reconsideration of educational materials and shared the timeline and process for the request for reconsideration of the book Crank by Ellen Hopkins. The meeting adjourned at 7:45 PM. Additional details regarding the information covered at the committee meeting are included in the minutes provided to board members. Are there any questions from the board members about information shared at the Instruction Committee meeting held on June 17?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Atkins.
Not a question, but I did want to share from that committee meeting that the Grading Coalition is, came through, and what they're going to do so that there's more transparency that we fought for in different aspects on this board, to help parents actually know where their children are maybe falling short or excelling at. This will actually keep, help them keep their fingers on the pulse. So, when they're going through and looking at their report cards, they're not just seeing A, B, C, or D, hopefully no F. They're actually seeing what areas they're excelling at, you know, what areas they're having a little bit of trouble in, and that way they can communicate better with those teachers. It gives the parents another tool in that toolbox. We're not just up here trying to reinvent the wheel. So, with that, I'm excited to bring this forward, and thank you, Mr. Bell, for your time.
Mr. Chairman, we have four action items if there are no more comments.
All right.
Number one, I move the board approve the Title I, Part D grant.
Second.
Motion's been made to approve the grant and has been properly seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Number two, I move the board approve the representatives for the Special Education Advisory Committee as presented.
Second.
Okay, motion's been properly made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries.
Number three, I move the board affirm the recommendation of the Instruction Committee to retain the educational material with the current restriction.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries.
And finally, I move the board approve the minutes from the Instruction Committee meeting held on June 17, 2024.
Second.
Motion to approve the minutes has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
New business.
Next is a series of policies, first being the administration nondiscrimination.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bell.
I move the board approve the amendments to policy 217P, as in Paul, nondiscrimination as presented.
Second.
Okay, motion has been made and properly seconded. Any discussion? Do we want to roll call vote these, or can we just in-course?
Mr. Chair, that's up to you. I mean, if you guys can roll call or just do it all at once.
We'll in-course it then. All right, motion's been made properly seconded. I heard no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, I'm sorry. Next is policy 403P, Students Equal Education Opportunity/Nondiscrimination.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Atkins.
I move that the board approve the amendments to policy 403P, Equal Education Opportunity/Nondiscrimination as presented.
Second.
Okay, motion has been made to accept the policy and properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have policy 501P, Personnel Basis and Standards of Employment.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bell.
I move the board approve the amendments to policy 501P, Personnel Basis and Standards of Employment as Presented.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is policy 504P, Personnel Equal Employment Opportunity/Nondiscrimination.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Atkins.
I move that the board approve the amendments to policy 504P, Personnel Equal Employment Opportunity and Nondiscrimination as Presented.
Second.
Okay, motion has been made and properly seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Next is policy 531P, Personnel Recommendation, Appointment, and Reappointment.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bell.
I move the board approve the amendments to policy 531P, Personnel Recommendation, Appointment, and Reappointment as Presented.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Excuse me. Next is policy 221P, Administration, School Crisis, Emergency Management, and Medical Emergency Response Plan.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Atkins.
I move that the board approve the amendments to policy 221P, Administration, School Crisis, Emergency Management, and Medical Emergency Response Plan as Presented.
Motion has been made.
Second.
And properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, policy 223P, Administration, Safety Drills.
Mr. Chairman, I move the board approve the amendments to policy 223P, Administration, Safety Drills as Presented.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Policy 301P, Instruction, Instructional Goals and Objectives.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, this, this policy, the changes being proposed are in light of changes made to the code pursuant to HB 1087 and Senate Bill 627. However, after speaking with Dr. Angelo, the portions of this bill that apply to the school board actually do not come into effect until next school year. Considering the changes that we've seen to these bills that occur in legislative sessions, the recommendation by staff would be that you table this for now. I'm sure it will be coming to you, but just in light of that, the, this probably should be held off until closer to the time it comes into effect.
Okay, so the person that made the motion should amend to table.
There hasn't been the motion yet.
Oh, it hasn't, I apologize.
But the motion would be to table it.
Okay.
Until.
All right, in light of what we have been told, what shall we do? What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Atkins.
I move that the board table the amendments to policy 301P, Instructions, Instructional Goals, and Objectives. Goals, and Objectives as presented until further notice.
Further notice.
Further notice, yeah.
Okay.
Second.
All right, the motion to table has been made and properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Next.
No, no, go, I'm sorry.
Next is Poli, Poli, Policy 308P, Instruction, Substance Abuse.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bell.
I move the board approve the amendments to Policy 308P, Instruction, Substance Abuse as presented.
Second.
All right, motion has been made properly seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up is Policy 318P, Instruction, Career and Technical Education.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Atkins.
I move that the board approve amendments to Policy 318P, Instruction, Career, and Technical Education as presented.
Motion has been made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Next is Policy 427P, Students' Relations with Law Enforcement Officials.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bell.
I move the board approve the amendments to Policy 427P, Students' Relations with Law Enforcement Officials as presented.
Second.
Motion has been made properly seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is Policy 514P, Personnel Professional Development Programs.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Atkins.
I move the board approve the amendments to Policy 514P, Personnel Professional Development Programs as presented.
Motion has been made.
Second.
And it has been properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the last policy on my list is Policy 541P, Personnel Supplemental Pay Assignment.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bell.
I move the board approve the amendments to Policy 541P, Personnel Supplemental Pay Assignment as presented.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Next item under new business is surplus buses, Mr., I mean, Dr. Hummer, I'm sorry.
It's all right, it's all right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. The reason this is before you this evening is anytime we surplus items that are greater than $5,000, we need your approval to do that. So we have gone back and worked with Mr. Shepherd and Mr. Pope and his staff to go through the surplus of buses that are on that lot. These are old buses that are no longer functional, and we wanted to bring that before you this evening for your approval. I have them here this evening in case you have any questions. If I'm not mistaken, we're looking at about $30,000 to $40,000 that we will get for these buses. The other thing to remember, too, is that anytime you want to remove a bus outside of this, you have to pay for towing, you have to take the tires off for environmental, you have to take the fluids out, all these things that happen. So this is actually a way for us to get money back rather than putting money into it if we wanted to move those items around. So we have the staff here if they want to add to that, or if you have any questions for them. So, Mr. Chair, that is why this item is before you this evening, because it's greater than $5,000.
Okay, is there a motion that we, or something we have to read?
Well, I got some questions first.
Oh, yes, please.
Uh, Mr. Shepherd, if I may call you up. Approximately how many, how many, specifically, how many buses are we surplusing?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven buses?
And we're, we're scrapping, and we're selling them for scrap. So, but yeah, twenty-seven buses that are on the lot.
So, before we scrap them, is there any parts or anything that we can strip off of there that we could use on future buses, or is it?
They've been stripped pretty bare. A lot of them have, yeah. And again, it's like, we talked about it before at one of these meetings, you know, we could pull parts off of them, but the, the newest bus we have of the twenty-seven is seventeen years old. The oldest is thirty-one years old. So, you know, if we're pulling parts off, you know, perfect example, the other day I was talking to Kevin, we had, we had a window frame that we needed to replace, and we had one on one of our buses. It took our mechanic five different, he busted five windows just trying to get to one window frame to be able to replace it on one of our buses that's running. So it's, it's not an efficient use of our time or our money.
Understood.
To, to be able to do that, so.
Can't siphon any gas out of them.
Probably not a great idea, but like Dr. Hummer said, the, the process that we're going to go through to, to scrap them, the, the vendors that we're currently working with, they're going to do all the towing, they're going to do all of the disposal of, of any of the fuel that's still left, they're going to dispose of the tires, all of that, which is a pretty significant cost. We've broken it down, Mr. Pope and I, and really, you know, if we took a higher scrap metal price and then we had to do all of that, we would actually get less money back than, than having them handle that, so.
Understood, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Yep.
Sir, I have a question. The vendors that we, that you're looking at, are any of them local Frederick County vendors?
We have one that's in Hagerstown, Maryland, and one that's in Waynesboro, Pennsylvania that we've been looking at, yeah.
And no one in Frederick?
We have not worked with somebody in Frederick right now. We've gotten pretty good price quotes from the two that we've looked at. The, the higher one right now is the one in Waynesboro, Pennsylvania.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Atkins.
I move the board approve, I move the board approve and authorize the superintendent to dispose of the, of the decommissioned buses and surplus personal property.
Motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Is there any discussion by the board? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Next will be committee reorganization. You want to just speak to this, or?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay. In light of Ms. White's departure, and we now have Dr. Erskine here as, as our newest member, we looked at some of the committee meetings, and I took over on building and grounds in Ms. White's absence, and Mr. Bell was made the chairman of the, oh, help me, which one?
Instruction.
Instruction, I apologize, it's been one of those evenings. So I am going to step down from the buildings and grounds, and we are going to place Mr. Erskine on the Buildings and Grounds Committee, and also on the Finance Committee. So all other committee assignments will remain the same except for removing me from Buildings and Grounds. And placing Mr. Erskine's on Building and Grounds and Finance. Any discussion by the board? Do we need to vote on that, or?
I, I, I have some discussion.
Yes, sir.
I would like to discuss welcoming Dr. Erskine to our board. This is his first meeting. He's jumped into it feet first and has started running along with it. So I would love to say thank you for, for coming out and putting your name in the hat, and I look forward to working with you for the remainder of your tenure, however long that may be.
Thank you very much.
All right, next is designation of designee and signatures.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is a, a bittersweet motion with Dr. Angelo leaving us and Mrs. Shantae Knight taking over. We have to, you have to designate a designee in my stead, as well as a designee to sign any documents if I'm not available. So we will need a motion and approval for that this evening to replace Dr. Angelo with Mrs. Shantae Knight. Thank you.
You sure you don't want to stay?
Mr. Chairman.
I've already received my gift for retirement, so I have to go.
Mr. Bell.
You know, we can recycle those.
Yeah.
I move to approve Mr. Shane Goodwin and Mrs. Shantae Knight as the superintendent's designees and to sign all Virginia Department of Education reports, documents, requisitions, and other official correspondence in the absence of the superintendent.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Is there any discussion from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Now we come to board member comments. Are there, and I know there is, so are there any comments from the board members?
Mr. Chairman.
Dr. Erskine, please.
At the risk of extending an already long meeting, I'm going to make just a couple of very short comments. The first one is a thank you. It's, it's a thank you to the board, a thank you to the community in Red Bud, a thank you to everybody out there. In case you're wondering, why did I do this? It was all those kids and all those families and all those coaches that felt so good to smile for them and clap for them. That's what this is all about, and that's why I'm excited about it. I, I want to be very cognizant of the fact that I'm an appointed member of the board, and I want you to know that I'm going to do my best to live up to the expectations both of you and the community. But it's an honor to be here, and I'm probably going to make some mistakes along the way, but I can promise you, my heart will be in the right place, and I'm here to do whatever and serve however I can. So thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Atkins.
Always got something to say, right? I want to congratulate all of our student athletes that were out here in full force tonight, you know, from the baseball team to the girls soccer, what a distance they traveled, you know, throughout competition this year. It was great to see all those athletes and the families who supported them show up tonight. I want to also apologize to all those folks, because this meeting did take a long, long time, and sorry, but closed session, we had matters to attend to back there as well. But we do note that, and we'll try to, if we have something come up like that, we'll try to spread it out over multiple meetings, or maybe start earlier. I want to also thank our community sponsors who were out here tonight. Everybody got to see them accept some awards for, you know, supporting the public education and, you know, alleviating some of the debt that, that we've incurred. Also want to congratulate all of the administrators who came on, from our new assistant superintendent, special education director, and middle school principal, assistant principal. And so, thank you, welcome to the team. Also wanted to congratulate Mr. Pepper Martin, thank you for all your hard work, and glad to see that the Field Over at Shandale will be named after you. Public commenters, thank you guys for coming out. That's kind of what it's about, and the way I see it is we serve for you guys, right? That's kind of the way it's supposed to be, right? So I don't care if we're here till two in the morning, I don't want to be, so please don't do that, and I'm getting, getting a lot of bad hate from the staff, but we're here, we're here for that, right? If you guys have a grievance and it takes till two in the morning, it's probably a pretty big grievance. If you're willing to hang in there with us, we're willing to hang in there with you. So that's why a lot of these amendments came through. I know that some of the folks out there wrote us emails, we received phone calls, and, you know, through our first reading, because of that, things changed. Because of those comments, things changed. When it, when it comes to these meetings and nobody shows up, nothing changes. We need to hear from you guys out there, you know? When Dr. Erskine came on, there was nobody out there to say anything good or bad for him, or any of the other members out there. So I, I would advocate for you to come out and participate in these meetings, you know, all those at home, please sign up, come in, you know, be part of your local government. You know, I'm not a big fan of, of big government, you know, want to hear from the people. We shouldn't be up here just making these decisions blind, you know? Two of my constituents came up today, and I'm appreciative of that, you know? So anytime you guys got something for me, please reach out, and we'll, we'll get it done. Also, Dr. Erskine, back to you. I want to say congratulations, you know, I think with every, all the resumes that came through, all the interviews that came through, looking at, at kind of where you came from and making phone calls, you know, to other board members over in Warren County, and talking with some of the teachers out there, I think we got a good pick. You know, I wish you the best of luck in your campaign as you're running for the Red Bud District. Look forward to working with you, so welcome to Building and Grounds. Dr. Angelo, thank you. You know, you've been here since the dawn of time, but, no, I mean, ever since I got on this board, you've done a lot for me, you know, as far as keeping me in line with some of these policies, you know, guiding me through what you do every day as far as taking care of these kids, you know, some of the instruction aspects of it, trying to keep me afloat on that. So I, I really appreciate all that. You will be missed out here, you know? Shame I got my, my taco buddy leaving me, so. Taco means Tacoma, Tacoma people. And then, lastly, the, the policy changes, once again, not going back to public commenters, but the policy changes that we made, like I said, is in reference to what you guys have all said. I know there was one comment about magisterial districts and, and have them sign up. Well, it says clearly right there, it doesn't say you shall, it says you should. And the reason we say you should let us know your magisterial district, so let us know your name, is if you're in our district, we want to come find you after the meeting and talk to you and say, how can, how can we do better? You know, how can we fix this? So please let us know. I'm not going to tell anybody, well, it's the chairman's job, but I wouldn't turn anybody away in any other committees or anywhere else if they had a comment and they didn't want to put up their magisterial district. I get it, it's, it's public, you know, but you are coming up for a public comment, so please do it. But yeah, I understand with the oxen and everything else that's out there, a lot of people might be apprehensive about it, so just a best practice, that's all. Thank you.
Go down the line.
Mr. Chair. Dr. Angelo, you have been very patient with all of us newbies up here, so thank you so much for, for, you suffer fools well, so I really appreciate you breaking down all of the big instructional terms and all the acronyms of education down for us, so thank you. I wish you all the very best in your retirement, and I hope you enjoy every single second, so. Dr. Erskine, welcome. It's great to have you on board. Thank you for your patience with us as we work through the process, and I really thoroughly am looking forward to working with you throughout, however long your tenure in that seat may be. So. This is two or four administrative appointments. I am super excited about these folks. Dr. Hummer, you've made a lot of really great hires and a lot of enthusiastic, energetic hires that are passionate about kids and passionate about our schools, and it's just, it's just really great to see, so thank you for the due diligence with those folks. And also to the public comment section, thank you all for coming out. Several of you reached out to me via email, and I encouraged you to attend. I'll echo what Mr. Atkins said, we are only as good sometimes as the information we receive from you. You elected us, we represent you, we want your feedback. We want you in the seats, but if you can't be in the seats, then by all means, please watch us on, on YouTube at your leisure, and always feel free to email and call us, and it's great to get your perspective, so we are not in a vacuum, you always have access to us. And also, too, I'm the at-large member, so I take care of everybody, but yet it always helps to know who, where your magisterial district is, so that we can come up to you after the meeting and communicate with you and see how we can help. Because as you can see during public comment, we can't respond back to you, even though there are times where I'm like, yes, I have an answer to your question, but we're not permitted to respond back, so hence the reason for that. So, once again, thank you all for your patience tonight, I know it's getting long, that's my, the end of my comments. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Bell.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to echo and echo what Miles and Diana had to say about pretty much everything. Well, maybe with the exception of Dr. Angelo, we'll talk later. No, in, in all seriousness, Dr. Angelo, I'm sorely going to miss you. What you've given to this district, what you've given to our, our division is, you can't put a price on it, and I, I wish you all the best and all, and all the wellness that I can for your retirement, enjoy those grandkids. I would also like to thank everyone here that's managed to stay until nine, almost I would also like to thank everyone here that's managed to stay until nine, almost nine-thirty. Thank you for your patience. Thank you for participating. Even if you didn't come up to speak, you were here, you showed up, and that's half the battle. Anytime we have a meeting, whether it's a committee hearing or a full-on meeting or a special meeting, you are always invited. You may not always be able to speak. Only at our general meetings are you able to, but certainly show up. And then if you have questions, email us. Email me from the Opeckin District. If you're not from the Opeckin District, email me. I will give you, I will always respond. I respond generally within 24 hours, and I will even take phone calls. So I encourage everyone listening tonight and everyone in the audience to do so. As it relates to 119P, as far as public comments are concerned. I, I don't think there should be any restrictions to people as far as signing up the night of or showing up and us giving them the opportunity, whether they've signed up or not, to come up and speak. As far as giving their name and magisterial district, it is a recommendation. It is not a requirement. There is no requirement. It is only a recommendation. It would only serve you to do so, as Miles had stated and as Ms. Klein had stated. Because then we can follow up with you. I won't, I don't know everyone in the Opeckin District. And so it would be helpful to, to know who you are. But again, if you don't wish to give your name or magisterial district, don't. What you have to say is far more important than who you are or where you live. So with that. I think that's everything. Oh, yeah, that's everything.
Ms. Martin?
I think they about said it all. Dr. Angelo, you will truly, truly be missed. Thank you. Thank you very much, okay? And I would like to also say to everyone out there that please do get in touch with us if you have something to share with us, something that you feel like you need to talk about or concern or an idea. Because you and the, your children and grandchildren are what it's all about. And unless we have an understanding of what your needs are, we cannot do our best job. Thank you.
Yes, it's me. I want to take a few seconds, so I won't drag this out any longer than we have to. I want to say that I have enjoyed working with you tremendously. I came here with a specific agenda in mind, and it was my idea when I got here. I was going to kick all the sand out of the sandbox. And it wasn't very long that I started to see all the staff here and work with the staff and found out what great people we have working here. And you, Dr. Angelo, have been, believe it or not, I have watched you with, with great interest, and I have learned a lot from you. I may not have said that, so I'm going to say it now. I have enjoyed working with you. You've put up with some of my dumber moments, and God bless you. And I wish you nothing but success, but I have enjoyed working with you. And if you ever need anything from this board member, please let me know, but I wish you nothing but success. And as far as this public comments thing, I don't know how it ended up being what it ended up, but I can assure everyone in Frederick County that at no time has this chairman ever denied anybody the right to speak. I have never cut anybody off from speaking. I have allowed people to run over. I have, it's just not going to happen. I believe in the Constitution, and I know what the Constitution says. So I don't know how it ended up from, from a simple thing of all we tried to do, or the, the original intent was to not make anybody stand at the podium and give their name and magisterial district, and it blew up from there. That was the intent of the whole thing, and people have been questioning it, so I'm telling you, that's how this came about because I came up with the suggestion, well, let's not have them do that. We'll just skip that process. But no one has ever been denied the right to speak, nor will they ever as long as I sit behind the podium as chair, so I will assure you of that. With that said, I also congratulate all those who got awards today. We have great students. We have great faculty. I have met so many great people. And, and all the principals and all the administrators and teachers have been decent to me. So with that said, I am not going to prolong this anymore. We have, in a way of announcement, our next school board meeting is July 16th, 2024. That is all I have. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Erskine.
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
It has been motioned and properly seconded to adjourn. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.